I call the March 24 regular city council meeting to order. Councilmember Miller, will you lead us in the pledge?
Yes, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Van, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bruins.
Presence.
Councilmember Daniels.
Here.
Councilmember Miller.
Here.
Vice Mayor Schaefer.
Here.
And Mayor Middleton. This meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse cable systems. This meeting is closed captioned and livestreamed at citrusheights.net. Tonight's meeting replays on Monday, March 28 at 9:00 a.m. on Channel 14. The meeting can also be viewed on the city's YouTube channel.
Next item, please.
Next item is approval of agenda.
I move approval.
I second.
Motion by Bruins, second by Schaefer. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Next item?
Next item is presentation number four, proclamation of the City of Citrus Heights recognizing the San Juan High School Boys Varsity Basketball Team.
Okay. Mr. Daniels?
Thank you. Thank you, guys, for coming. Tonight, we're going to formally recognize you for your accomplishments. And I want you to know that they're dear to my heart as a San Juan Spartan alumni. I'm so extremely excited to see another example of a successful athletic program at the school. I wish more parents would understand that they can send their kids to San Juan High School and find success. And if our residents, our homeschool area did that more often, we would see more success. So congratulations to you guys. Tonight, we're honored to recognize the San Juan High School Boys Varsity Basketball Team upon winning their first league championship since 2012. I know this was an emotional win for all of you. I know this was an emotional win for all of you with the recent passing of fellow teammate Devon Johnson. I really want to commend the team for their outstanding team spirit and support for one another, which led to this tremendous win. I would now like to read a proclamation we have prepared. And after I read the proclamation, we would like to present each team member with a certificate of recognition also. So this is our proclamation honoring the San Juan High School Varsity Basketball Team. Whereas the San Juan High School Boys Varsity Basketball Team won the Sierra Delta League of Division Four, their first league championship since 2012, and their first playoff appearance since 2017. And whereas the San Juan High School Boys Varsity Basketball Team had an overall scoring record of 16 and 10 and a league record of 11 and 1, very nice, nice, nice. With an average of 61 points per game. And as a side note, I looked at those games, and you guys crushed a lot of people. And I would imagine that you showed a little mercy there, too, at some point, but good job. And whereas the championship team was led by outstanding head coach Freddie Bryant, who was recently named Coach of the Year. And whereas Coach Bryant and his players were successfully supported by a talented assistant coaching staff that included Jermaine Galloway, Sam Gouvier, I hope I got that right, Sam, Darren Zanders, and Ulyss Ingram, and I hope I got that right. And whereas the players' dedication, perseverance, and love of the sport of basketball is reflected in their tremendous winning season. And whereas the players' families are to be praised and thanked for their support of their student athletes, including countless hours spent supporting practices and cheering from the bleachers. Now therefore be resolved that the City Council of the City of Citrus Heights does hereby congratulate the San Juan High School Boys Basketball Team on their successful season and extend best wishes for their future endeavors. In witness wherever, we set our hand on the seal of the 24th day of March 2022, and it is signed by Mayor Portia Middleton. I will now present certificates and ask that my fellow council members to join me at the podium. So as I call your name, just please step up. We've got a little gift for you and a certificate. And then we want to get 150 pictures and all that, so be ready for that. We'll stay, moms, we'll stay, okay? Just don't rush. First off, I'd like to recognize Caesar. Next up will be, and I hope I say it right, Nani? Where'd he go?
Caesar.
Caesar, come on back. Come on. Told you there'd be pictures. Come on now. You could tell Narco is the guy that, you know, yeah, you know. Zachariah?
Oh, Zachariah.
I'm guessing taking care of the middle there. Did we get everybody? Just wanted to make sure. Excellent. Big round of applause for these guys. Dive it up, dive it up. And then Coach, if I could have you come up, say a few words, and then make sure he gets this all sorted out. Go ahead.
No mic? No mic? I have a voice.
Yeah, that's right.
Fellas, hold tight, just hold tight. So first off, thank you all for showing up, for the parents. Thank you so much for trusting.
Trusting us?
No, I don't need the mic. We're loud enough. But trusting us with your children. They could have been anywhere, but they chose San Juan, and for that, we are very grateful. This is a special class, especially for me. Oh, yeah? Okay. All right. Especially for me, this is my last season at San Juan as far as coaching. Been there for a while, eight years, been coaching for 20 years. So I've given my time, passed it on to a great San Juan alum as well, right? So he will continue this on moving forward. So again, thank you all for showing up. And for the boys, I appreciate you all, man. Thank you for the hard work. All right, congratulations.
Well, that's a pretty hard act to follow. Am I live? Yeah. So we have one more proclamation this evening to give, and the mayor has graciously chosen me to do it. And this is in honor of Women's History Month. So just a couple things. We have two wonderful groups here in Citrus Heights that work hard for our community, and I'd like them to come forward, representatives. One is Citrus Heights Women's Club, and the other one is Seroptimus. So I believe that Lane Parks and Jean Marie Wilby are here, and any other ones of their members who'd like to come forward. Great, okay, so. Why don't you stand right here? So to recognize Women's History Month, we've invited Seroptimus, our Seroptimus Club and our Citrus Heights Women's Club to join us this evening. And first of all, I'd like to share that the Citrus Heights Women's Club is an organization dedicated to community involvement by enhancing the lives of others through volunteer service. We're a community with a lot of volunteers, and among some of the best are these women that stand beside me. They have dedicated countless hours of service to the community of Citrus Heights, raising money for the specific purpose of providing mental health and wellness-related training to the Citrus Heights Police Department. Also, Seroptimus organization works to economically empower women and girls through access to education and has been an integral part of the Citrus Heights community. They have partnered with various organizations, including Single Moms Strong and the Citrus Heights Police Department, empowering single mothers and assisting domestic violence victims. So because of their wonderful work in our community, we have a proclamation, and I will briefly go through it. Won't read all of it, but you'll get the idea. First of all, whereas women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of Citrus Heights in countless recorded and unrecorded way, they play a critical economic, cultural, and social role in every sphere of the city. They have been leaders in securing their own rights in the past with suffrage and equal opportunity in the abolitionist, emancipation, industrial labor, civil rights, and peace movements, creating a more unjust society for all. Women are serving in elected positions all over the United States, leading groundbreaking civil rights movements, venturing into unknown territories, proclaiming revolutionary technologies, and generations of women who knew that their gender was no obstacle to what they could accomplish in the long term. And despite their contributions, the role of women in history has been overlooked and undervalued from time to time, especially in literature, education, and culture. So this month, we want to honor the pioneering women and their victories. So therefore, let it be resolved that the City Council of the City of Citrus Heights does hereby recognize the month of March 2022 as Women's History Month, and we honor all women, but especially the ones in this room where they're standing up here or sitting in the audience, for your contributions to Citrus Heights and the American history. So join me in thanking these women for all that they've given to our community. Jean Marie?
I'm Jean Marie Wilby.
Hi, Jean Marie, very nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you, too.
Please accept us on behalf of the Women's Club from the Citrus Heights City Council. And is Jean Marie here?
She's Jean Marie.
I'm Jean Marie.
Oh, I'm sorry, Lane, there you are. I'm looking at Lane saying, Jean Marie, hi, Lane, good to see you.
Good to see you.
There you go, thanks for all that you do.
Thank you.
Bet.
So that's the most exciting part of our evening tonight. If anyone would like to go ahead and leave now, please do so quietly. We won't even hold it against you. And next item, please.
Next item is comments by councilmembers and regional board updates.
Okay, Jeanie, you're already warmed up, so.
Okay. Well, we had a regional sanitation board meeting yesterday, and it was almost, it was completely consent, except for one closed session item, so I have nothing to report out from that meeting in particular. We also had a PAL meeting since our last council meeting, and we went over some of the things they talked about last time, but I'll emphasize them again. We did vote at that meeting to continue to employ a PAL coordinator, the one we've had, has moved on, and so we will be looking for someone to take that spot. We also reduced PAL memberships for this year to $5 a year as we are gearing up to bring more programs back. It's normally $10. And let's see, we already reported on the cornhole tournament, very successful with the help of the chamber, raised over $4,000 for PAL programs. Coming up, I think this is what's really important, on May 14, our traffic unit, the Citrus Heights Police Department Traffic Unit, and the STAKE grant, S-T-A-K-E, which has to do with educational training enforcement of not providing underage people with illegal tobacco products. Those two units will be working to host a public safety and kids' safety event on May 14 at Rush Park. And this is really great. This is where kids will learn safety, medical aid, water safety, bicycle safety, car seat safety, tobacco safety, and more. So it's for the whole family, and we typically give out car seats for little kids and helmets for bicycle-riding kids at events like this. So if you have children or not, come on out, it's something for everybody. And then later this month, we are going to be hosting, on March 28, a hoppy Easter coloring page on our website. So just go on the PAL website, and you can participate in that. And then also on May 28 during, oh, excuse me, wrong, yeah, no, sorry, different date, May 28, that was March 28, at Rush Park, we're going to be hosting a Chalk It Up Art Walk. So for kids that like to do artwork with chalk, this is a day for them. And we have other events coming up in the future, but they are yet to be determined date-wise. And I'd also like to acknowledge Officer Brittany Soriano. She is on the PAL board, and she is working very hard to educate kids on campus about the dangers of smoking and vaping. She's also been involved in some successful decoy operations with other agencies throughout the area, and I'm proud to say that most of the arrests and the violations, not arrests so much, but violations, are from retailers outside of Citrus Heights. So our retailers are being conscientious not to sell tobacco products to underage children, which is to be commended. That's it.
Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Mayor. Let's see, Wednesday, I attended the Connect Citrus Heights meeting, and it was the first in-person meeting of the group, and it's nice to see that coming together. And because of this, it really, I was very proud of our neighborhood associations. They all got together and reconnected after COVID and produced this great poster showing all the neighborhood associations and how to get in touch, and also made some suggestions to change on our website to make it easier to find your neighborhood association. So that was a good meeting. Today, attended the Sunrise Marketplace Board of Directors meetings. And of note, they're looking at getting two to three murals at Birdcage with that wide-open walls. I think they started downtown, and they're going to talk more artists into coming out to Citrus Heights. There's already one mural, I haven't seen it, but there's one mural there, I'd like to check that out. And they even talked about, there's a Chalk It Up event that Sacramento does that we're thinking about doing in the Sunrise Marketplace. Also discussed the shelter wraps for the RT bus stops. And maybe tomorrow, Mary, I need to get with you and understand what's going on, because there's some happy with it and some not happy. So I need to figure out and get everybody happy, I hope. Not always possible. Also, there's, I know everybody wants to do something, this is just tragic what's happening in Ukraine. They're having to protect, I can't believe we have to do this, and if I can get through without tearing up, I'll be doing good. Protective gear drive, and this isn't for Ukraine's military, it's for their citizens. And they need help fighting for their freedom. So they're going to be doing on Saturday, April 16, from 11 to 3 at the Marketplace at Birdcage, a drive to get things like tourniquets, bandages, combat gauze, decompression needles, burn and sterile bandages, occlusive tape, dressings, tactical clothing and boots, flashlights, and sleeping bags. And no weapons, it's not going to get to Poland even. And they are going to ship this to Poland and get it across the border however they can. So that's April 16 at the Marketplace. What else did I have? Oh, yesterday, attended the Employee Appreciation Day for Regional Transit as the board chair, and got to meet people at the bus and light rail maintenance buildings. Two lunches, I didn't eat two lunches, but lunch was provided for the employees, which is a great event. And you know, the RT employees, above all, they've been at work every day since this pandemic started. We've kept transit running, and I know there was times when there was nobody on the buses, but we could get the essential workers to their jobs. And so, but it's quite stressful, because we had people, you know, go out sick, and it's been hard to keep it running. We have a labor shortage right now. If you want to drive a bus, they're hiring. And so there's all kinds of stresses that have been put upon the employees, and it was just nice to get out and thank them for the job they're doing. Next week, Monday night, the meeting looks very short. Of course, I always say beware of the short meeting. We will be voting on the amendment to RT's Enabling Act, Assembly Bill 2015, carried by our very own Assemblyman Ken Cooley, and I think that's all I have for now.
Thank you. Mr. Daniels?
Thank you very much. As part of my assignment to the Air Quality Board, I was able to attend the Yosemite Policy Leadership Conference over the last weekend. Lot of good stuff, dealing with climate, air quality, energy, a very strong emphasis on hydrogen for the future. Very good information, actually some very promising technologies coming aboard. Also talked about broadband expansion, normally fiber optic, which you see them digging into the ground and all of that, and advances with only having to go down a very small distance now, and other advancements where they literally go down just barely below, I guess, the asphalt and put a line in, and they're done in minutes. And so, a lot of good advancements in that respect. And then some really good, what I would call very realistic presentation on homelessness and housing and all of those things that are connected. So overall, a very good conference, about 125 elected officials and staff members, very well-attended, and a good time also. Saw just everything weather-wise, cold, hot, snow, rain a little bit. So it was good. I want to take the opportunity to commend Chief, the chief and the Police Department. Couple of days ago, I had a situation where I observed what I felt, what I believed was somebody that had been involved in a crime and fleeing from an area, and not knowing for sure and not having my cellphone at the moment, it took me a few minutes to get home. And so I just called the non-emergency line to pass along the information, and that phone call was answered after one ring. That's remarkable. That's why we became a city, that's why we have our own police department. And it doesn't always happen that way, but I just want to make sure that the public understands that's why we're here for the most part, because of local control and especially being able to respond to things in an incredibly timely manner. So hats off to the chief and the department for that, definitely. The Easter Bunny is coming, he's coming to the mall, so that's a good reason to go to the mall. He'll arrive tomorrow, he or she, I don't know. So the Easter Bunny will be at the mall starting tomorrow through April 16. So it's a good opportunity to get the kids up there, get a picture, and look for something to buy at the mall. And then finally, on April 9, there will be a Kidtopia Celebration, which is, I'm going to read this one, a hopping good time event, free activities for the kids and families, including a meet and greet with the Easter Bunny. I guess he's going to come over from the mall there for the day, and that's from 10:00 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. at the Citrus Town Center. So get your kids out there, that's a fun time, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I had the library word meeting today. Our new library director, Peter Coyle, is getting nice and settled in. We talked about some financial issues and developing a financial committee. It's a great group of people, great board, but really not much more than that to report out. I do want to recognize that, number one, it's not only Women's History Month, but it's also National Celery Month. So when you go visit the, that's a real thing. It's, I learned a lot about celery today. It's a marsh, a weed, and it had medicinal purpose, or it had a medicinal value apparently at one time when it was, when it was first discovered. So bring some celery to the bunny rabbit when you are, the Easter Bunny, when you go to the mall. So a little levity there, so, but other than that, that's all I had, Mayor.
Thank you. Not much to report on my end. I did want to follow up on Steve's comments about the protection gear drive. I've been, yeah, I'm working closely with the marketplace and with our Ukrainian community. I actually went out with my family, we bought several hundred dollars' worth of gear to, as soon as this is going on, we're going to send it over and do what we can to protect those communities and help these citizens, you know, fight for their country. I also noticed that there was a little bit of a, what am I trying to say? A little bit of questioning in my inbox about an article that was in our local paper, and I just wanted to ask the city manager to kind of, you know, briefly just weigh in on that, so we can get some clarification, please. If you know what I'm talking about, maybe you don't.
Can you clarify the article?
Oh, it was the article stating about, we have a surplus of over $6 million.
Okay, sure. Sure, Madam Mayor, yeah, I saw the article.
Sure, Madam Mayor, yeah, I saw the article and I understand that correction's been submitted to that. There was a report that the budget surplus was $6.2 million, which was actually a revenue number. And the actual operating surplus for the last fiscal year was 3.6 million.
Perfect. Thank you for that update on the correction. Next item, please.
The next item is public comment, and members of the public may address the council on any agenda item of interest to the public and within the council's purview, or on any agenda item before or during the council's consideration of the item. Speakers will be limited to three minutes each. If you wish to address the council during the meeting, fill out a speaker identification sheet and give it to myself. If participating via Zoom, use the raise hand function or star nine from a telephone to indicate your desire to speak. When your name is called, I will allow you to unmute your microphone to speak. And Mayor, I do have one written comment, and I know you also have one speaker sheet that was submitted.
Yes. I will call up Kathy Morris.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. I really am here just to alert you, excuse the voice, it's the allergy season for me. I'm just to alert you, you know, all of you know of National Night Out, it's an annual affair, it's on the first Tuesday of August, this year it happens to be August 2. We're starting our preparations and Chayson, Citrus Heights Area 789, has reserved Sebar Sea Park. And so we know we're going to send everybody invitations and our police department. It's a community event. It is sponsored nationally and celebrated locally. So it's a time for neighbors, the city, officials, people to get together and reconnect. Goodness knows what's been going on these past couple of years, it's a good time to reconnect. And so it'll be Tuesday, August 2, at Sebar Sea, you'll be hearing a lot more about it. And I'm sure other neighborhoods will have them as well. So put it on your calendar, you're going to be busy. Thank you.
Thank you.
I see two raised hands in Zoom as well, so if you would like to take those first and then I can read the written comment.
That's fine, thank you.
So the first speaker is Rick Hodgkins. And you are now able to speak.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, great. So I had a hard time accessing the agenda online, but someone, Councilmember Daniels, thank you so much for mentioning that the Easter Bunny is going to be at the mall. I prefer if it was a she, but that's yet another subject for another day and another time. But with that said, I hope that for years to come, that the Easter Bunny and Santa Claus will be at the mall. I don't think that the mall is on discussion for tonight's agenda, but that, with that said, I hope that the mall, in combination, will not, as it is, will not be torn down. Hopefully that we will allow the mall to be both inside and outside as part of the Sunrise Tomorrow plans. Because I have seen malls that where you have, that where you can enter into stores both from the inside and outside. I know as Casey Campanara told me last year, even, because I had, I, I was both in private, I attended a private one-on-one conversation with him because I had a hard time accessing the public forum on Zoom, even though I did attend, I had a hard time interacting due to technical difficulties. He, he reassured me that it did not require that the mall as we know it be torn down. And that with that said, I let him know that I've been in tons of different malls that where you can enter stores from the inside and outside. And we also have to be, you know, mindful of the fact that as much as people want a place that is walkable outside, you know, let's be mindful of the fact that it does rain and therefore people are going to want a place to hang out indoors, not just outdoors. So that with all of that in mind, thank you very much.
Mayor, if I could add something real quick? I have gone to an authority figure and it has determined that the Easter Bunny is a female because she lays eggs. So there we go.
And Mayor, I do have one more raised hand from a telephone ending in 640. If you could state your name and you can now unmute yourself to speak. Our telephone caller, are you able to unmute your telephone to speak?
Yes, my name is Arthur Kitterling, and I would like to mention that I understand that RT is, right, getting ready to have input on, on the next five years for, for the buses and all. And I would like to mention, excuse me, that, that where I live, at the moment, that I live on, in the south area of Sacramento, which would be Sacramento City, where, where that a lot of the places that I need to go, like to the doctor or to almost anywhere, that there is no buses at all. And I'm on, right on the borderline of where I live, of where Smart Ride could pick me up. But at the same time, they cannot, I repeat, they cannot take me where I need to go because the boundaries is, is, they don't go in that area. But yet, there's a, a small, there's a small, small area on Center Parkway that, where light rail goes. But at the same time, where light rail goes, it is a, a long way from where the, from where the doctor is. And, and I have to take a taxi at times, a lot of times to, in order to just get to the doctor. And I, I would like to have RT have, have some bus service connections so you can get around.
Arthur, we are having a hard time hearing you.
I understand. Can you hear me now?
Yes, you have a few seconds left.
Hello?
Yes, Arthur, you have a few seconds left.
Wait a, wait a moment.
Okay, I don't, I guess he's not there?
Are you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello?
Arthur, we, I think we have a bad connection. But I think we got the, we understand.
Yeah, I know a little earlier, a little earlier that there was a bad connection when I first called.
Okay, but we, we got, we understand what you're telling us and we'll, we'll look into it for you.
Arthur, this is Councilmember Miller. The comment period for the short-range transit plan closed March 16th. But if you have questions, you can get ahold of Sarah Poe at Regional Transit. There's actually a page for it on the website, if you can get to that for more information, and I think that'll help.
And that was all of the speakers that I had for public comment.
Did we have any written comment? I'm sorry. Yes.
If you could just speak, go up to the microphone and then state your name.
Hi, respected folks and council people. My name's Nikki McNally, I live at Vintage Oaks Apartments, and I'm new to this and I'm concerned about America and Citrus Heights. So I'm on Telegram and I met Stand Up Sacramento, a lady named Debbie. She couldn't make it tonight, and she's asking me to call the sheriff's elected citizens and say, I'm Nikki and I'm friends of Constitutional Sheriffs and Peace Officers Association. Okay? We have two powerful national speakers coming to our region on April 2nd. Sheriff Richard Mack with CSPOA and constitutional attorney Chris Ann Hall with Liberty First University. It's a one-day event on Saturday, April 2nd, from 8:30 to 4:00 PM. The cost is $49, including lunch. It's called the Constitution for Public Safety and the Citizens, P-O-S-S-E. I don't know how to pronounce that word. We are inviting sheriffs, under sheriffs, coroners, elected officials, and citizens from all over Northern California. Several counties have already signed up. There will be a private breakout session for the law enforcement and public officials so they can talk candidly about their important issues. I can email all the information for your review. Do you think you can attend? This is, I'll be here for the first time. Would you be willing to share the information with others who might be interested to attend? So anyway, there's an email here. Again, redhatpatriot53@protonmail.com. Thank you!
Thank you. Did we have any written comment?
Oh, I apologize, yes, we do have one written comment. From Alfred Sanchez, he states, Snack Man's Birthday Sock Drive Ends March 31st. Alfred has been working hard to get as many socks donated for his birthday month as possible. Socks are so very important to homeless hygiene, so please consider contributing. He distributes snacks, provisions, and resources to local homeless. Contact Alfred via Facebook. Alfred Sanchez, AKA Snack Man, Citrus Heights. Happy birthday, Snack Man.
Next item, please.
The next item is the consent calendar, items six, seven, eight, nine, 10, and 11.
Move approval?
Have a motion?
Second.
And I have a second, motion by Vice Mayor Schaefer, second by Steve Miller. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item, please.
Next item is a public hearing, number 12. The subject is public hearing number four on the redistricting process. The recommendation is to hold a public hearing to review the final map and receive public input regarding the composition of district boundaries and to approve the second reading of an ordinance adopting a map describing five council districts. So good evening, Mayor and Council, City Amy Van, City Clerk. Like I just stated, we have, we're recommending that you open the public hearing and receive any public comment on the final map and then adopt the ordinance that you have before you. We do not have any formal presentation for the council tonight, but our demographer, Robert McIntyre, is available if there are any questions. And with that, I'll turn it over back over to you, Mayor.
I will open the public hearing. Any questions, comments?
And Mayor, I do have one raised hand on Zoom.
Okay.
And the Speaker, Rick Hodgkins, you can now unmute yourself to speak.
Zoom webinar.
Thank you, Mayor Middleton, members of the Citrus Heights City Council, Rick Hodgkins, residing at 8007 Sunrise Boulevard, apartment at 179 Citrus Heights, California 95610. Don't know what district I currently reside in, don't know that which district I will reside in. No matter, no matter which district, people with disabilities live in all districts of Citrus Heights. So my, the only point I want to make is, no matter, I mean, so far, the maps cover all minorities pretty much. And I just want to make sure, no matter what district people live in, people with disabilities reside in, no matter which district, there's, you're always going to have, wherever there's people with age and creed and ethnicity and language barriers, you're also going to have people with disabilities. So you want to look at all the demographics, not just age, not just creed, color, gender, sex, you also want to look at people with disabilities as well. Please, so, thank you for that and good luck.
Is there any other comments?
I do not see any other raised hands. Did you want to speak on this item? You can come to the podium and state your name.
So I'm not sure if this is the right place to say this, but, so we all know there is a Walmart and Costco right around the corner, and there's construction there, and they're building new homes right there. I think like single-family homes, I'm not sure how many, I think they said eight houses, I'm not sure. And there's construction there. And our fence, so our house is right there on the street. It's the first house right there where the construction is being taking place. And so they took down our fence because I'm pretty sure they're going to build a new one. But the kind of fence that they put was see-through, it was, it's just wire, the wire kind of fence. And that spot is very busy, there's a lot of cars coming in and out because of Costco and Walmart. And everybody, I felt like everybody could see through the fence and into our backyard. And our sliding glass door window is right there. And at the time, we didn't have currents, and it just felt like our privacy was a little invaded with the see-through wind, fence. I felt like maybe they could have put tarps or something, covered it up, that, so it wasn't being seen by every car that was passing by, because I would be in my backyard with my, my family. And there was just cars repeatedly pass, driving by and, and I'm making eye contact with some of the people driving by. And it just felt like a little invading, a little, little weird. But I've been living in Citrus Heights for all my life, 21 years. I went to Citrus Heights Elementary School, I went to Sullivan Middle School when it was still up, and I went to Mesa Ready High School, so I've lived in that area though my whole life. And, and I never once felt we, like I didn't have a privacy living here in this area until now. I felt, yeah.
Okay, that doesn't fall under this comments here, but I will have a That doesn't fall under this comments here, but I will have a staff member work with you. Casey right here, and we'll, we'll get you a solution if we can. Thank you for your comments. Any other comments related to this item? With that, I will close the public hearing. Members, do you have any comments or?
No. I'll go ahead and move the item. And I will move that we approve the second reading and adopt the ordinance 2022-002, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Citrus Heights, adopting a map describing five council districts pursuant to California Elections Code, Section 21600 through 21609, and amending Article 2 of Chapter 2 of the Citrus Heights Municipal Code.
Second.
Okay, motion by Bruins, second by Daniels. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Next item, please.
The next item is public hearing number 13. The subject is Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development on Program Year 2021 Community Development Block Grant Funds. The recommendation is to conduct a public hearing to review the city's consolidated annual performance and evaluation report for the community development block grant and to adopt a resolution approving the consolidated annual performance evaluation report for program year 2021 and direct staff to submit with minor modifications as necessary report to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Good evening, Mayor Middleton, councilmembers. Nicole Piva with the Community Development Department. So I'm here tonight to present our 2021 Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report. So the purpose of tonight's meeting is to hold a public hearing and consider the adoption of the Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report for 2021 and to direct staff to submit the CAPER to HUD. So what is a CAPER? It is a consolidated annual performance evaluation report. It's really a evaluation of the city's community development block grant program. And it really just provides kind of an overview of what we've accomplished with our CDBG funds and the activities and programs that we have accomplished in the, the program year. So with that, we always welcome public participation throughout the program year. Our draft CAPER is available for public review between March 8th and the 24th. We've also posted a public notice in the SACB, and the CAPER is reviewed per our HUD regulations. It is available for review. We're here tonight to hold the public hearing, and any public comment that we receive during this time or throughout the year, we do incorporate it into the final report, which is due March 30th. So 2021, we had a lot of revenue to work with. We have a CDBG grant that we receive annually. This is our entitlement grant, and for 2021, we received $647,000. We're lucky enough to receive CB funds. These are our coronavirus funds, our CARES Act. In '21, we received round three. This is our final round. So the total allocation for that grant was $920,000. We also receive loan repayments. When someone pays back their loan, we're able to funnel that back into the program. So in 2021, all of our expenditures, we had two capital projects, various signalized intersection project. This was funded with our CDBG funds, and it provided curb accessibility ramps. The Sunrise Recreation and Park District at San Juan Park, we were able to improve the restrooms there. The Critical Home Repair, this is a grant program that allows low-income homeowners in Citrus Heights to apply for funding to health and safety repairs to their home. We provided public services. These are nonprofits who provided services to our residents, including our CB funds as well. Planning and administration, this is administration funds to run the program. And then our home repair program is continuing into next year, but this is similar to our critical repair program where homeowners receive loans for health and safety repairs to their home. So kind of a snapshot, with our CDBG funds, we track how many clients receive services. So our two capital projects, about almost 6,000 persons benefited from those two projects. Our Critical Home Repair Grant Program, we funded 13 households. And we have a variety of public services, and a little over 6,000 people benefited from the public service programs. So in partnership with our capital improvement projects and our nonprofits, with our CDBG funds, we served over 12,000 Citrus Heights residents. Kind of a overview of our public services. These are the nonprofits that provide a service to our residents. And you can see the number of clients that were served. Like I mentioned, it was a little over 6,000. Just to talk about a couple of the nonprofits, one being Meals on Wheels. This is a senior program that provides meals to our seniors. Two parts of the program. We have congregate meals. And this is where seniors can meet at Rush Park. They receive a meal, one day, a hot meal, one day a week. And then we also have our home-delivered program where volunteers deliver meals to seniors. And a senior can either receive a hot meal every day or they can choose to receive five frozen meals one time a week. I thought these numbers were really exciting, and I wanted to share them. Meals on Wheels served 550 seniors. These are unduplicated seniors, so throughout the year, they can receive however many meals they want. But we served 550. And of those congregate meals, 215 seniors, and home-delivered meals were 335. So just at Rush Park, the café site, it was over 12,000 meals. And during the stay-home order, the volunteers got together, and they still provided meals to the seniors, even though they weren't able to, to meet at Rush Park. Home-delivered meals, 29,000. And of those, 2,600 were hot meals, and 26,000 were frozen meals. So just with our CDBG funds, we served 42,000 meals. Single Mom Strong, they offer a tutoring service to distance learning enrichment programs. You can see here, the first one is a tutoring service, and the other two youth are in the enrichment program. And with our CDBG funds, we were able to fund staff times so they could run these two programs. Rebuilding Together, like I mentioned, they served 13 households. These can be, you know, low-income seniors, disabled. This woman received an accessible shower, so she was very grateful for that. And with that, I have two recommendations. One, holding a public hearing on the, on the CAPER. And the second is to approve the CAPER and allow staff to submit it to HUD.
Okay, at this time, I will open the public hearing. Any comments from the public? Any raised hands?
I do not see any raised hands.
Okay. I'm going to close the public hearing. Is there any discussion or action from the council?
I'll move that we approve the resolution of the City's Council of the City of Citrus Heights, approving the Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report for program year 2021 and direct staff to submit with minor modifications as necessary the CAPER report to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Second.
Okay. I have a second by Daniels, but a quick comment from Vice Mayor.
I'd just like to commend you on a great report. Looks like you've done some very good work here. So I'm proud of the, of the work that we've done here at the city. So your entire department, very, very good work. Good job.
Thank you.
So I have a motion by Bruins, second by Daniels. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Next item.
Next item is public hearing, item number 14. Subject is amendment to the business license ordinance regarding short-term rentals. The recommendation is to introduce for a first reading and read by title only and waive the full reading of an ordinance amending Chapter 22 and Chapter 86 of the municipal code and adding Section 22-451 through 22-460 regarding short-term rentals.
Good evening, council. Allison Bermuda with the Community Development Planning Division here tonight to present this item to you. Let me get my presentation up here.
Seems we're having a little technical difficulty, so everyone just sit tight.
All right. Thank you for your patience on that. All right. So tonight, we have an item to discuss. This is a follow-up from a study session we held in September. Brought to you information on short-term rentals within the City of Citrus Heights. And we had discussion on moving actions forward for licensing or any other type of amendments we wanted to do to regulate short-term rentals. So this is a follow-up from that September meeting. As a, as you recall, short-term rentals, this is lodging facilities that have a stay of 30 days or less. So commonly, a hotel motel. Also included in that is short-term rentals, what we consider VRBO units, Airbnb. So, single-family homes that rent out the entire home on a short-term basis, or maybe it's just a bedroom or some portion of the, of the residence. All those would be considered short-term rentals. We have seen an increase in the number of short-term rentals in the city. A few years ago, we had five listed on the services. Now we're in the 70s, becoming very popular service for travelers and business people, short-term rentals. We also did begin to see, receive a number of increased calls for service. And at the time, we didn't really, we would know that they were short-term rentals only after lengthy discussions with the tenants. But we weren't really aware of all the short-term rentals that existed and how many were receiving calls. And currently, we do not have any regulations or codes that are related to the rental, short-term rentals. So as we mentioned in September, some avenues we could take to move forward on short-term rentals. And so we went towards a business license regulation. And so tonight, we'll present our proposal to regulate these through a business license. First, we needed to do is identify these locations. If you've been to the websites on short-term rentals, they tell you, they show you a map with a pin of where it's approximately located. They show you some pretty pictures, but you don't really have an address. So the first challenge we had was really to identify how many existed and where they were. We were able to do that through a third-party service, and that's when we discovered that there were 70 units listed on a variety of services. And these are 70 unique listings, many that are advertised on multiple platforms. 52, we were able to completely identify through the photographs and confirm their location. So we have 52 identified properties. And then through, with, once we were able to identify where the locations were, then we could look into calls for service and what was occurring. Kind of surprised to find that 25% of those units were causing calls for service, mostly related to noise. So of those 52 properties, 13 of them had at least one call for service during the period time. And five had three or more calls, and then one had an excessive number of calls. So the business license process is something that we already have in place. And we are able to implement that on short-term rentals. So we would be able to have contact with the owners of the properties, or the operator of the property should issues arise. And it's not a new license that we're creating or any type of new process. It's something that already exists. And so it is a way to make connection with these property owners and obtain their information. They would just apply for their license online, like any other business. They'd renew it annually, online, and then also could be revoked should issues continue to arise. We did not propose any additional regulations except for one. The ordinance does state that they're limited in number of guests. Parties at these units seem to be the biggest deterrent and the biggest calls for service. So we do have a regulation in there that the guests would be limited to two per bedroom plus two additional, and that would be between the hours of 10:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m. So during the day, they could have more people, but it's those nighttime hours that would be regulated. So for example, if you had a two-bedroom house or a three-bedroom house, you could have six people, two per bedroom plus two more people between 10:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m. As we normally like to do, we like to know what the other jurisdictions around us do. So Sacramento County, Roseville, Rockland, many of them, as you can see here, have two licenses required. They require a short-term rental permit as well as a business license. Some just have the short-term rental permit. So there is a variety of options available. As I mentioned, ours is proposing just the business license, since we already have that in place, and it's something that would be easier to implement and not be any extra steps or any extra creation of licenses or permits for the property owners. Just a quick information on transit occupancy tax seems to be some of the questions that have come in on this topic. TOT taxes collected countywide, it's a 12% tax that's applied to stays, to these short-term stays. So you pay that anytime you're at a hotel traveling or any other short-term stay, collects this 12% tax. We're not proposing any changes to that. That has all been our ordinance, have been in place since the city's inception. There's no proposed changes. But it, just to bring it to the attention that short-term rentals would be obligated under the current regulations to remit their transit occupancy tax. At this point, we're not receiving any TOT tax from short-term rentals. And assumably, it's probably because they don't know it's a requirement. It is something that the operator of the unit would have to collect and remit to the city. But that is something that will be in place. And with the business license, we will be letting the person know about their obligation for TOT and just providing them the information on it. We've done an extensive number of outreach on this topic. We didn't want anyone to be surprised. So after that September workshop, we did set up a dedicated webpage. We've put it in our March e-newsletter, did several social media posts, have it up on the website through our news items and news flashes. Also did mail direct letters to the property owners of the identified units, letting them know about the proposal, find them opportunity to comment on the topic. And I have no, received no comments from people who had questions, phone calls with questions, but no direct written comments or any comments to share. And though, we sent two notices out on that. So if you approve this ordinance amendment, it will go into effect in the middle of May. We'll, we'll be available for them to submit their license. And then we'll also follow up to those property owners with additional letter of the And then we'll also follow up to those property owners with additional letter of the changes and allow them time to get their license submitted. In the future, you know, we're not sure the impact this may have. If we have a lot more short-term rentals that come into play, or we have an abundance of TOT tax that comes in, we may look at avenues where the platforms would collect that TOT. Some platforms offer that service, some do not. We'd have to work with them individually, and that may be an option for us in the future. There are also third-party services that would collect that payment and then provide it to the city. So there are options in the future. So should that become necessary for us, and if there's significant impacts. Not expecting that, but those are just some options. With that, I'll entertain any questions that you might have.
Got a couple of questions, Allison. So first of all, is there any inspection associated with these properties? That, are they legal? Do they have smoke alarms? Do they have a legal restroom? All that, if they're going to do these short-term rentals, are they required to submit for inspection?
And there will not be any inspections with this, the business license. It will just be an application. The capture of the ownership information for the record, but we will not be doing any inspections.
So if we collect a business license from them, we're aware that there's a short-term rental, the property burns down and two people die, we're not accepting any liability for that. Is that what you're saying? Is that what I understand?
I'll let Ryan answer that one.
Yeah, I don't, I understand what you're saying, Vice Mayor Schaefer. I don't believe that that does add much, you know, more liability. We already do a lot of other inspections. I mean, we do the best we can with them. The fact that we don't maybe do a full inspection and check every smoke alarm, you know, I would say the liability risk is low.
If I could add to that, I think certainly if that was a desire of council to have as part of that application process, I'm sure that we could have like an affidavit or an attest that may be a little less invasive than an inspection, but it would have them attest that they have smoke alarms in place and operable bathrooms, things of that nature.
Our regular rental properties are subject to inspection. We have that program in place already. Okay, so, so that's, that's, that's one of the questions. Certainly, just, this is just a comment that I think that, as a person, actually use Airbnb quite a lot. And, and I think it's a, it's a great thing, but it is counterproductive to affordable housing. Quite honestly, I'll stay someplace for seven to ten days and it'll be a thousand dollars. Where now we're taking these homes and essentially displacing what could be affordable housing into a short-term rental opportunity. So I do have some questions. We have a profile of, of the owners. I see a note here that some of the owners are absentee. And, and that's, that's a little bit of a concern, that we would have some upkeep issues or some simple contact issues with, if this is a problem property, getting in contact with the homeowner or the property owner may be a challenge. So I think at least getting some documentation through a business license, I would say, is incredibly minimal. So that's all my comments for now.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Let me just dovetail on that. We, you know, as I was listening to your concerns, Tim, I would voice some of them. It would be mine as well. And, but we have in place already laws and ordinances that speak to some of these things, like smoke alarms and carbon monoxide plugins and so forth. So I think that if, if with the business license application, that the property owner were to attest that they had these working signals, alarms in their property, that would be something that I think would be a good thing to include. As well as, I mean, I can't imagine anybody would rent a VBR or a BNB that doesn't have a functioning plumbing system, you know? And I guess, and the other thing, I just have a question for Tim. I'm not understanding the relationship between BNBs and affordable housing loss. That you, can you explain what you meant by that?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
So let's say that, that an investment company, some of these companies are big investment companies, and they just decided to come in and buy up lots of, let's say that they bought fifty homes. Let's say they bought fifty homes in the, in the, in the Citrus Heights area for the purpose of this short-term rental. Those are homes that are not going to be available for the general public to rent. Those are just going to be, again, it's short-term, high, when I say high-revenue generating properties, that displaces where people could live. And that's, that's a little bit of a concern, especially in this community where, you know, we're not a, you know, we're not a resort community. People aren't typically going to come here for some kind of, so far anyway, some kind of vacation. So yes, I think we, we displace whatever those short-term rentals are. Those displace potential rental property volume.
I see.
For, for long-term rentals.
Thanks for explaining. Brett?
Yeah, thanks. Can you go back to the page on calls for service? That's the one, yeah. So, and there was a number seventy and there's a number fifty-two. So I'm just trying to be clear. There are fifty-two identified homes, right?
Correct. There are seventy listings, unique listings.
A couple of duplicates.
No, that's seventy unique listings, but fifty-two could be identified, confirmed of their address.
Okay, so there might be as many as seventy?
Yes.
Okay. And then five of that, five of those had three-plus calls and one had eleven calls.
Correct.
And that's a significant amount of issue. And if you know, and I don't expect you to know, but you always amaze me anyway. If you know, have we done anything to address those six properties or at least that one property?
I believe so.
And I don't expect, you know, I don't want to have to haul the chief up here and put him on the spot. That's not the point then. So, so we're doing something to deal with the problem children, is what you're saying?
Yes, I believe that we knew the eleven call, one with eleven calls was a short-term rental. We discovered that a few calls in. I think the thirteen and the one with three or more called, the five that had three or more calls, I don't believe we knew those were all short-term rentals until after we were able to get the addresses. We knew they had, were getting calls, but we didn't connect that they were short-term rentals.
Okay. And then I think the last time, on the last presentation we had, we actually had, I thought my memory was, the actual number of calls actually that happened for these residences. And it was extremely small compared to the city and what the police department handles. And one is one too many. It really is. And, you know, I'm looking at an email right now from, and I get these kind of often rude partying neighbors. Somebody has sent me an email that they want me to look into this. And so this kind of thing happens a lot. It happens a lot in the real world, way beyond the, the short-term rental world. And, but it's just that I'm concerned that we're looking to get involved in something that I'm wondering if it's going to produce enough revenue to even pay for itself and the staff time and stuff like that. Because I don't, I don't want us to get there. I don't want us to do that. We already have a staff that's stretched thin totally. So I have concern about that, that are we opening up a box that doesn't need to be opened? And especially with the potential revenue that it will bring back covering the staff time and cost. So that's my concern. I, I, again, going back to the other presentation, I still haven't seen what I would consider evidence of a problem that's significant enough to, to require government intrusion into resolving it at this point. I don't want it to get that way. I'm not saying that we react after the fact. But I'm just saying, I don't even see a problem yet to that level, you know, even rearing its head. We have some problem children to deal with, and, and I think we should deal with them in a very harsh way and severe way. But we have tools in place to do that. And so I would, I'm not going to support this tonight, but it's likely to pass. But it just seems like we're, again, in search of a solution for a problem that we don't have. Thank you.
Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd argue that we do have a problem, and especially if it's next door to your house. And the difference being, and we do, we do have these same issues with folks that are partying, that get police called on. But these are unique in the fact that sometimes folks slip through the cracks and we get young folks that aren't even of legal age to be drinking, and it gets out of hand. It gets on social media. Perhaps a gang shows up and there's a shooting. So I would hate to say there's, you know, why are we proposing a solution when we don't have a problem? And I'm saying, if we had a problem, everybody would say, why didn't you have the solution? You know, you knew about it. And I think that's my biggest problem with government, is you ignore the issues. They get so big and someone dies. And I don't know why we should, you know, as taxpayers subsidize these businesses, and I, I do think it's quite lucrative. I don't think I could rent my house out, but most of the people renting their homes are responsible people. And they rent to responsible renters, legitimate renters. But it looks like we have one problem, and I hate to see it grow. And to see twenty-five percent of verified properties had at least one call, and you're telling me they're for noise? That's more than what we have out there in the, in the city. And I could, I could be wrong, but, and willing to be corrected. So we're not proposing any new regulations. Everybody in the city, whether you're, you have a short-term rental or you're a homeowner or a renter, it's the municipal code. Same rules apply to everybody. Tax is existing, and my biggest concern is the hotelers. I mean, we're talking about bringing one, maybe three hotels in here. And if, if we're not in, collecting this tax, what are they going to say when they get here? You know, it's been past practice. You don't collect this. Why, why are you charging us now? It's always been there. I don't want to even abdicate looking at the honest folks coming forward and saying, well, you owe this much tax now, back taxes. No, this, a lot of it is our fault for not having this in place, and that's a problem. So moving forward, May fourteenth, everybody gets a fresh start. And I think that's my comments.
Okay. Go ahead.
Thank you, everybody, for your, for your input. The way I look at this is that these people are running a business. They're making an income off of it. And as a business owner myself, who just had my business license renewed, it was all done electronically. There was, probably some staff time to set up this program that I renewed through. But like every other business in Citrus Heights, I believe short-term rental businesses should have a business license. Everything else is in place. So that's all, the only issue is, do we impose a business license on them or don't we? And if we don't impose a business license on these businesses, then we have that argument, we could have that argument for other businesses. Why am I paying for a business license? So that's, to me, that's the only argument we have, or the only issue we have tonight is, do we impose a business license on them? And I support that.
Once again, Ms. Bruins, you stole the words right out of my mouth.
Well, so sorry.
Okay, so this is a public hearing, and I will open said public hearing. Any comments from the public? Do we have any raised hands?
I do not see any raised hands.
All right, it's your last opportunity. Okay, I'm closing the public hearing. What is the pleasure of the council?
Well, I might as well do it again. I will introduce for a first reading, read by title only, and waive the full reading of this ordinance, which is an ordinance of the city of Citrus Heights amending chapter twenty-two businesses and chapter eighty-six taxation of the municipal code and adding sections twenty-two dash four fifty-one through twenty-two dash four sixty regarding short-term rentals.
I have a motion by Bruins?
Second.
Second by Miller. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
No.
Okay, motion passes. Next item, please.
Next item is regular calendar, number fifteen. The subject is resolution authorizing payment of the outstanding revolving line of credit balance and amending the general fund budget for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-two, twenty-three. The recommendation is to adopt a resolution authorizing payment of the outstanding revolving line of credit balance and amending the general fund budget for fiscal years twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-two, twenty-three.
Move approval.
Some good news.
Second.
But we'll let you, we'll let you do your thing. Go ahead.
I'll be quick. Good evening, Mayor Middleton, council members. I am Bill Zanoni, the interim administrative services director. Just real quick background, in November of two thousand eighteen, the city issued short-term financing to meet anticipated capital and operating costs during the period until the city would begin to receive its share of property tax revenue from Sacramento County. The financing was structured as a twelve million dollar revolving line of credit with the Citrus Heights Community Center pledged as collateral for the financing. The line of credit financing has a term of six years with interest paid only on the amount of funding utilized. And the interest rate ranges from four point four to six point oh six percent. The current outstanding balance on the twelve million dollar line of credit is three point five million dollars. Of that, three million four hundred and seventy thousand was used to purchase the old Sylvan Middle School property. And the other fifty thousand and one dollar was funded, cost of issuance, to develop the financing. The terms of the financing require that it must be fully repaid by September first of two thousand twenty-four. But that we, the city has the option to prepay with no penalty beginning March first of two thousand twenty-one, so March first of last year. The current two-year budget, the second year of the current two-year budget includes two million dollars for the first repayment of the outstanding line of credit. And in the long-term financial plan that the council reviewed last month, we anticipated the second or the million and a half to be, to be funded or paid in fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. So over two fiscal years beginning, beginning next year. However, because we don't anticipate drawing down any additional funds on the line of credit, also because we, we did end last year with a three point six million dollar operating surplus. And as we indicated last month, we, at this point, are projecting a smaller surplus this fiscal year. And also because we are paying interest charges of about thirteen thousand two hundred dollars a month, which works out to about four hundred and forty dollars a day on these, on these funds, we believe it's the fiscally prudent action at this point in time to prepay the line of credit, which will save the city, the general fund, about a hundred and ten thousand dollars overpaying it in the two future installments. So based on all of that, it is our recommendation that the city council adopt a resolution authorizing payment of the outstanding line of credit. And that would also authorize the city manager to execute the necessary documents to unencumber the, the title to the community center, so that will be free and clear again. And also to amend the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two budget to appropriate three million five hundred and twenty thousand and one dollar to prepay it this fiscal year, and then also amend the next year fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three budget and remove the two million dollars that's in next year's budget. That's my presentation.
I hesitate. Questions? Comments?
I'd just say thank you for the presentation, getting this debt retired. It feels good. Unfortunately, as you were talking, my mind was drifting, realizing I forgot to make my credit card payment, so. I'm thinking of all the interest I owe now, so thank you.
Jeanie?
Nope, I guess we'd like to move the item.
Move approval.
We already did.
Oh, we already did that?
Well, yeah.
I thought that was.
I'll take credit for it.
Hold on. No, I didn't miss that.
Sorry.
Comment still.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to say that this is great. This is absolutely wonderful. And I, and I hope people in the public are understanding that it's also a reflection, number one, the kind of city we are. And number two, that we're alive, we're vibrant, we're thriving. And, you know, you hear a lot of garbage out there sometimes, and mainly because of the mall and those issues, but. the mall and those issues, but we're, we're thriving. We're alive. And, and then I want to just personally thank the city manager for moving this forward because it would be very easy as a new city manager to just kind of step back and go, you know what, I think I'll just keep that money over here and maybe do something to make me look good in the process. And instead, a very wise decision and I think it shows the quality of city manager that we picked, that he's saying, you know, let's get this money, this debt down and, and let's do what's best for the city and not just me looking good. So I appreciate that, Ash, definitely. This is a wonderful decision and with that, I definitely will move the item.
Okay. Motion by Daniels. Second by Miller. I did not miss it this time.
I'd like a quick comment.
Go ahead.
I just want to say that, you know, I just want to dovetail off of Councilmember Daniels's comments and that is, this is, this does make the city manager and it makes us as a team look good. We're all taking a look at this and how this vote comes out, I suspect it's going to come out really well, but we're doing this as a city and I'm proud of that and, and thank you. That's my comments.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next item, please.
The next item is city manager items.
We'll come on and brag a little bit.
Well, good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Nice to be with you tonight. Thank you for, for your comments this evening. Good team here that brought that forward and good team effort by all. Could I go to the next slide? I do have a few updates. Speaking of looking good, anybody see Bonita lately? It's looking quite bonita. A lot of new pavement out there, which is terrific to see. That project is substantially completed this time, just wrapping up the improvements. Looks like they should be done here in April and then coming back to the council for a project acceptance in May. But just great to see some infrastructure investment there, the drainage improvements, the new top side and what's going by there when it's getting paved and nice to see it getting complete. If we can go to the next slide? ARPA Small Business Grant Application Update. We talked a little bit about this in prior meetings. Team has done a great job of getting the word out on the program that the council approved for a grant program. There's still some time to get your application in if you're a small business. The close, the period closes on March 26th. To date, we've got 70 applications at the time that this slide was put together. The next step will be a review of the applications to look at the eligibility and also the required documentation. And then looking at the number of applications we have compared to the funds where we're at, it does look like we're going to be doing a random drawing, given the authorized funding that we have today. So exciting that that program definitely got a lot of attention and excitement with the community and looking forward to helping the businesses, given the money that the council approved for that purpose. If we can go to the next slide? And then I heard comments about this earlier tonight. I mean, one of the things that, as I've been out in the community, it's clear Citrus Heights cares, you know, community cares a lot. And it's hard on everybody to see the human suffering that's going on over in Ukraine. And there's been questions about how can we donate to a reputable agency and, and make a difference. And so looking into that and doing some research, that's the United States Agency for International Development, USAID. They have a list of reputable relief organizations that are currently doing work out there. So we certainly wanted to, to make that available so folks know it's sadly, at times of crisis, there are people that pray and try to have organizations, they stand up that are frauds and this group does vet out responsible organizations. So we provided a link to their organization on our website for those that want to contribute to the refugee crisis. And that concludes my comments.
Thank you. Next item?
The next item is items requested by council members or future agenda items.
Anything?
Yep.
Go ahead.
So tonight, hopefully I don't worry the city manager too much, but I would like to see if I can get two of my fellow council members to join me in asking if we could get a report back perhaps maybe by July 1st on the possible annexation of the Roseville Point subdivision and the commercial area coming up into Roseville and Antelope on this side of the road. That would clean up, I think, just an oversight that occurred, good lord, more than 25 years ago. The people of Roseville Point live in the suburbs of Citrus Heights and I would hope that they would want to come into the City of Citrus Heights and, and move forward with hopefully cleaning up what was just simply an oversight. And I think that would hopefully help us also with having a little better control over in that area with some of the blight that we see, the fallout from homelessness and stuff like that that's over on that corner that doesn't get addressed well enough. So just want to see if maybe two of my council members want to do that. There's no hurry, there's no, you know, and July 1st is just a date and we can always, you know, push it out if it needs to be also, but just looking for a report back on the possibilities of doing that, what it would take and, and where we want to go with it.
Okay, before we get into this, I see Ryan staring at us all. Make it brief and do not engage in deep discussion, please.
I, I agree with Councilmember Daniels.
Okay, that's two.
Well, but I wasn't seconding it. I think there's a bigger issue and we need to look at all the little unfinished items. And we had tried with the county before and basically their response was not a price we were willing to pay. Am I talking too much?
Too much words.
Okay.
Yes or no?
I would like, well, then I would like to talk about this as strategic planning in May.
My only issue again with that would be that, that.
That's a lot, that's a lot.
No, not a report back, but talk about.
Knock it off.
They're not talking policy.
Is there a third?
Yes, there's a third.
Okay.
We'll work out the details.
Please bring it back at the initial July 1st date and if we would like to bring it up for discussion at the strategic planning session, that is a possibility.
Well, I think we will.
Thank you. All right. Before we all get, you know, violations of the Brown Act, we're adjourned.
I was trying to talk policy. Good job.